I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I want to welcome everyone to our October 16th meeting. Please note the council is in full attendance. The first item on our agenda is items from council, and we have two items that were placed there ahead of time. Is there, before we do those, is there anything else?
I wanted to say something, but I'm chewing on it.
What? Go right ahead.
It was Saturday. Saturday, we were working, sitting up for the homica for Lady Sars, and right in the corner of glass and river, a lady stopped, and we heard a pop, and we thought it was gunfire. We turned around, well, I did, and I saw the car smoking, and the lady still kept trying to, you know, turn it on. The harder she tried, the more it popped, and all the smoke is coming out. And they started saying, "Lady, get out of the car, get out of the car." The car caught on fire. It started just, it just bursted to flames. When the fire department and the police department got there, there was parts flying all over the place. And these guys, they go in there like nothing. They risk their life, and, you know, there is glass, there's pieces of everything flying away. And to see these guys going there was awesome. So we thank you. Thank you so much, both the fire and the police department. I'd never been there, and then I thought, "That's why Gabe loved you guys so much." So, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that.
They have that saying, "They run in when everybody else runs out."
Right.
You witnessed it.
I did.
Yeah, thank you. That's a wonderful story to hear and to share. We appreciate that, Josie. Good. Um, I, yes, ma'am?
It's a little thing, but I'd like to pull D3 from the consent agenda.
Okay. Long as it's just a little thing now.
One quick thing, our next meeting is the 30th at 5:00 p.m.?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we're, last week, or whenever, two weeks ago, we decided to change the January meeting. Were you here for that?
No, sir.
It's, it was gonna be the first or second?
Well, it's scheduled on January 1st, which is our first Tuesday of the month, so we, council agreed to move it to that Thursday, the 3rd.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And they, um, thank you, Councilman Bocknight, the 30th is the joint meeting with the Planning Commission to talk about the Unified Development Code. Then we'll be back on schedule on November 6th.
Okay, and I had a, our EOC director's here somewhere. Where's he at?
He's in the back, kinda corner.
A lot of people concerned about the flooding. Does this affect the Guadalupe? I was gonna, come on up. People see it on social media and all that stuff going on, the Llano River and all that, and I don't think that comes into the Guadalupe Basin, does it? Do we need to be worried since?
No, sir. We do have some concerns for the weather that is out in central Texas right now, and is expected to develop in the next couple of days. But if that weather pattern shifts a little to the east and to the south, then we'll have to worry about it. It'll be in our watershed then, but up to this point, no.
Okay, so what we're all seeing of the Llano does not affect our area at all? That water's not coming downstream to?
Correct. That's gonna go into different watersheds.
Okay.
So, expect some minor flooding on the Guadalupe River probably by the end of the week, around 20, 21 feet maybe at the most.
Okay.
Bloomington.
In Bloomington, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
If nothing else, we do have, Councilman Bocknight, you have the sidewalk ordinance and the high school traffic. Which one you wanna do first?
Let's do high school traffic, because I think there's some people in the crowd that wanna hear that discussion, and, uh, wait, if they wanna leave after that, they're more than welcome to.
Okay, and I had to ask Mr. Bocknight if I could go first on this, even though it's kinda his issue. I know he has some suggestions, and there's been some history in recent weeks with, that I have been working on the issue. And I was actually gonna bring it to y'all. There was no action for council at that time. There's really none yet at this point, but I have been working on it. I don't know if any of you have had calls from constituents. And I really need to recognize, we've got the superintendent here with us tonight, and the school board, Tammy Keeling. Are there any other board members? I don't think so. Okay. Um, you know, it's not a new issue, it's just with respect to traffic in the Carriage Point neighborhood around East High School. I think it's just a little worse this year, perhaps. At the beginning of the school year, it tends to flare up each year. And each year, I might get a call or two, and this year, there's a little bit more of a problem there. But we have to go back to the beginning. I wanna clarify and get some, some facts out about this, the situation around the high school and the traffic. Originally, when that high school was designed, and I have this on absolute fact, these are not, this is, this is, you know, not a matter of opinion. There was other entrance exits. I think it was out to John Stockbury on the original construction designs and preliminary plats. None of that stuff is kept, though. The only plat we have is the final plat, which shows the entrance as it is now. At that time, we, city staff, highly encouraged additional entrance and exits. City staff or council did not have the ability to force that to occur. So for whatever reason, you know, financial decisions, trying to stretch their money as far as they could, they chose not to. I'll make that very clear. We couldn't force that. And some of you who are on council, remember, you know, the entire bond package, I think the city spent a little over $4 million on incendiary things around each of the new campuses, which is fine. There's not, that's not a problem. With respect to East High School, it was the traffic light was around $300,000 and maybe however much for some of the sidewalks. So, you know, that was our, our input over there, but the problem is still there, and it is particularly bad this year. When I started getting contacted mostly via social media, I'm not gonna mince words, it angered me that a lot of people seem to lay it on the city's doorstep. We did not create this problem, but nevertheless, it's a problem. So I have had conversations with at least three board members. And also, one of the suggestions I had, and I'm, I'm just gonna take a little while, Jeff.
Yeah, you're fine.
Was a suggestion that they could modify the code of conduct at that campus that would allow them to, and I hadn't had time to share this with y'all. They could modify the code of conduct that required students being dropped off or picked up. It'd occur on school property. And then perhaps, you know, an administrator could walk over and kinda warn everybody not to do that, and after a little while, the behavior would change, and maybe that's a way to solve the problem without spending really a lot of money or resources. Now, I don't know what the school board will do with that. That's just a solution that, since I have worked with school districts quite a bit, I do know that's available to them. But that's their decision. It's not ours. But I emailed each of the board members that with suggestions for enforcement, et cetera. And then later, got a notice of a meeting with Senator Culcorst, which I thought was odd. She had asked the police chief and myself and the city manager to attend a meeting with the school board president and Ms. Keeling. I kinda was, thought it was odd. I asked her, "Why are you involved in this? I don't understand what..." Well, come to find out, the reason she got involved was because there's a misconception that Tech Dot would not allow an entrance exit ramp over on the access road, over on the, the new access road by the 463. Okay, that makes sense why she's there. Originally, there was no access road. It was a ramp. I think it was an on-ramp, and you could not put an entrance exit onto an on-ramp. Now there's an access road. Now you can. And I know some of the folks in the neighborhood, a little bit overlapping information, we're still hearing from people that, "No, Tech Dot won't let you." No, that's not true. They will now, now that there's an access road. So I think I got that all figured out. That's what was happening. Perhaps some of the people that live over there, that might make sense to them, too. So we had that meeting. One of the things that I personally suggested and made it very clear, and Charmel was there, and she heard this. You know, "I'm one of seven votes up here." But I said, "If you can get the county to kick in some fund to help build that extra driveway, I, one out of seven, would support matching what the county contributes." Understanding completely that there's six other people with a vote, that doesn't mean council would support that. So if they came back and said, "Oh, we can build this driveway for $300,000," if the county said, "Well, we'll contribute $50,000," I would say, "Okay, well, I'll see if city will do $50,000." I could do that. You know, something like that. But that's just my opinion. I made that abundantly clear. You guys have your own opinions about the matter. So that's, that's where we left it. We did, Tech Dot was gracious and said they would look at the plans and try to offer any advice, perhaps maybe some cost savings. I know we offered some of our staff to look at it, too, and see if maybe they could offer advice onto the design and cheapen it, make it less costly. One of the engineers involved early on in the original process, I talked to this morning, he told me they have the entire set of plans at their office that are available to y'all if you want them. You could just upgrade the cost estimates on the materials and stuff. So that's kinda where I'm at. If they make a request for funding, then we can discuss as a council. Now.
Do you mind if I, do you mind if I?
It was a lot, a lot of information.
Well, now, just those numbers you threw out, those are just numbers for examples of what the cost was and what we'd give. I don't want anybody to leave here thinking that was the actual cost of that driveway, because that's, that was just an example.
And I don't know, yeah, you're, thank you, make that clear as a bell. I don't know the exact, I've heard the number, $500,000. I've heard less. I don't know. I just don't know what, so. But, Mr. Bocknight, so that's what's transpired with me.
Okay, thank you for that, and thank you for that background. I took it from, I found out about that meeting, but I'd heard from Representative Morrison a number of weeks ago when some citizens in Carriage Point contacted her about the Tech Dot issue. And subsequently, I've spoken with Mrs. Glor in Carriage Point. And I spoke with Mrs. Keeling last week. I spoke with Mr. McCoy about past stuff, too. Just trying to think on what can the city do, because personally, me, I don't think it's our financial responsibility to build driveways on school property. That's, that's the school district's responsibility. It's not a city function. We'll help them however we can, I think, with city resources, giving them input on how it might affect traffic, where they put it. Happy to, to offer that up, but I don't think it's money that we need to be handing them. For the residents at Carriage Point, however, there's three items, and I think the paper quoted me on two of them, and I subsequently came up with another one after driving in, looking at a bunch of our other schools, and how we've handled traffic at those. To take Roland Elementary or Deleon Elementary, Smith Elementary. All of them have one ways at certain times of the day, which correspond to dropping and picking off children at schools. So one of the solutions that I thought of first was no left turn off of Mockingbird into Carriage Point at that light. As you know, there's a bunch of cars turning right off of Mockingbird as they're headed towards the loop, and it backs up. So then if you got someone taking a left, trying to get into Carriage Point, both lanes are clogged up.
Are you talking about no left?
On Mockingbird.
If you're going east, you're not talking about it?
Correct.
Okay, I guess it would be a right if you're going west. Sorry.
Because the, the right lane's backed up. There's no dedicated turning lane into the school. There's no dedicated left-hand turn lane to turn into the neighborhood. You can hardly see, because the cars are trying to take, whereas they're heading west on Mockingbird, it's hard to see to take a left into Carriage Point, because they're queued up to take a left into the high school. So it's, it's almost amazing we haven't had a wreck there, but if you had no left turn there allowed during certain hours, that would stop at least some traffic going into the neighborhood.
Is that the only entrance into Carriage Point, though?
There's one off of John Stockbury. Couple off of John Stockbury.
All right, thank you.
Another thing to do is make that Carriage Point entrance one-way. And I would, I don't know which way's the right way to go, one-way, and I think I would have to ask the residents of that community, which is a better way?
You're gonna make half of them mad and half of them happy?
I mean, you can pick one, and you're right, but there's still always another entrance, but if they can't come out that way, well, that stops some traffic there. Or if they can't go in that way, it stops traffic, and it's just during those hours of school pickup and stop, just like the other streets that we have by schools. And the third thing is, this is the one that I would really have to lean on the petitioners or that neighborhood, is no parking along Pennsylvania Avenue during certain hours. I took pictures as, as going by Smith Elementary, and there's no parking along that street that connects right there by the old Victoria High. I can't remember the name of the street right now, but there's no parking there during certain hours of the day. And it's also a one-way during certain hours of the day. So those are three tools that we have in our bag to change traffic patterns in that neighborhood and protect them. And you know what, what they're experiencing is people parking in their driveways, people parking on their grass, 'cause it's a rolling curb, litter. I wouldn't like it if I was living there for certain. None of us would. It is a public street, but there are things that we, we can do as a council and as a city to help them out. I do realize, if you implement any of those or all of those, it's gonna push more traffic back onto Mockingbird. It's gonna queue up lines longer, and it's gonna make that situation even worse at, at east. So I do realize that as well, but I still look at it as a V I S D problem. They need to solve their entrance and exits. East isn't alone in this. I don't wanna leave West out of this at all, because both my daughters go to West. I had to take one the other morning, and it just happened to be right at peak time. Took me 45 minutes. And that's just to get her to school. That's, that, very tough to do for a lot of people, to take 45 minutes out of your day to just to run a child up and drop them off at school. So there's other issues around there that make it even more difficult to solve some of the traffic issues, and that's why, right at this time, I'd just like to focus on east. So I guess by me talking about it, I wanted to see if there was any consensus or desire for, for the rest of the council members to look at these options for implementing one, two, or three of these ideas for Carriage Point.
What was the left turn? I wanna make sure I understand.
If you're heading east on Mockingbird, so you're going towards the loop. No left turn during certain hours off of that, into the neighborhood.
They'll come in during those times, those residents that live back on Pennsylvania and that area will come in off of John Stockbury.
Yeah, the, the major difference between the other examples is those other examples all border the school property, especially with parking and stuff. I don't, I'm, and to be honest, I'm leery of being punitive to the residents for a problem that's not, they didn't cause or we didn't cause. But the left turn one is, I don't know, I'm open to that. Just not the parking restrictions are one-way. That's just my opinion. I don't know about you guys.
Well, I'm curious, to say no parking on that street, my, my, this is where I need clarification. Isn't it people sitting in cars waiting for somebody, so that they would say they're not parked? They could move. And, I mean, that's the concern I have with trying to say no parking. You know, the only thing I've been...
You put no parking or standing.
Yeah, I mean, and also enforcing the not blocking a driveway, which I think is...
It's law right now.
It's law right now. And so that, you know, if we enforce that, that would cause there to be many less cars, which I, I don't know if it would back up further into the neighborhood or...
Mr. Bocknight, I know you mentioned this to me the other day. What will you do with those residents that park on the streets anyway? That might be shift workers. They've come in, they've parked there during that time, and then, so you're gonna, we're gonna expect them to go out and move their vehicle during that time? And re-park?
I don't know. I guess they could do that, or, um, they can prove that that's their residence at municipal court, and they don't have to pay the fine.
Like a neighborhood parking sticker.
Yeah.
I mean, that's essentially what you're coming down to.
Mr. Hapaski?
Amongst other problems that I observed Monday was two people stopped, picked up their kids at the crosswalk on John Stockbury in the middle of raging traffic, and quite a bonehead stunt. I'm not pulling any punches on that, but we're gonna have it in other places as well. I'm, I'm kinda looking at this, 'cause we've been down this road and, and other parallel things. And one of them was when people wanted speed bumps to slow the kids down in front of their house. This is all over the city. Bunches of them. And, but nobody wanted to run into the speed bumps when they traveled about town. They only wanted it on their street for their purposes, but when they drove around the city, they didn't wanna have it. Doing a little research, we found out most cities don't allow it, except on private property, with the exception being Fort Worth. And if you go to Fort Worth, it's an open...
San Antonio has them, too, especially around schools.
But when I, when I see a special exception for one neighborhood, is there a better way we can do it, is my first question, and I don't know that answer.
I know, but I don't consider a special exception for that neighborhood. Bell Tower, I believe, is the one close to Deleon. That's one-way as well.
Yeah.
You start looking at how things get crowded, and can you get emergency vehicles down? I, I still worry about that one for Deleon.
Yeah.
Can you really get emergency vehicle down if you had to? I don't know.
I've had somebody contact me about Deleon, and we've got them looking at, they were interested in extending the length of time for the one-way. And Charmel has talked to the school district, and they're investigating if that's a good idea or not necessary.
And Charmel did, and Traffic Control is talking to the principal.
Thank you.
And I'm, I was just talking at lunch today. The chief was at the table at Rotary and stuff, and a couple other people, but I, I don't remember this when I was a kid, that, I don't know if more people carpooled then, or, or what it was, but I don't remember these long lines. Like, Deleon, the other day, I passed by, and there's cars waiting on John Stockbury just to turn into the neighborhood to turn to the street to go to Deleon. And I was just shocked. I, I'd never really noticed that before, and maybe it's always been there, and I was just, unobservant as a 10-year-old, 11-year-old, which is quite possible.
I'm intrigued by the mayor's thought of having the campus solve it by only allowing pickup and drop-off on the campus. I don't know, and it would take some enforcement, but, you know, we, we maybe could be involved to some extent in getting people moved off to Carriage Point, but...
I don't, I...
I'm sorry, and I didn't, I meant to get y'all to copy that email for your read file. It's just been a week, so.
Yeah, I think trying to stop someone from crossing the street and leave campus, I don't know.
Well, but a police presence, as that was starting to be enforced, could, could hasten that along.
Yeah, Russell, right now, a police presence, you know, it's not illegal to park on a public street, so there's, they would go over there. I guess, obviously, the visible presence of them encourages good behavior by the kids. They stop climbing in the trees and doing whatnot. But, I mean, how long do we do that? And how much resource do we, you know, y'all know about how many officers are on a shift at any one time. Do we have to tie one up over there? And so what we can do, just, and I don't wanna cut anybody off. There's a lot of people here probably have something to say about it. We can do a citizens' communication on this issue and let them talk, and then come back and do the second one. Is that okay?
We don't have a map of the, of the area with the one-way flow, do we, that you're recommending?
No, it's a very short entrance street. There's no houses on that street that's, that I'm proposing to be a one-way. It's just an entrance to that neighborhood.
Yeah, it's about here to the door.
Yeah, it's about it.
And there's already no parking on that street?
So people would come in from the other direction to, to get to there. I mean, they would just wouldn't take a left off of Mockingbird. They would come in the entrance off of Stockbury and queue.
Yes, if it was one-way going just exiting. Yes.
Well, I think they do that now. I think that's part of the issue. They're voiding the whole area by coming in off Stockbury, cutting down the street, and then...
That's...
Based upon the way they're facing, and I know the neighbors are probably chomping at the bit to tell us that, but the way I've seen them sitting, it, it tells me they came in from the Stockbury direction, and then they, you can take a quick ride out.
You'd queue up as close as you could on the street, for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so going one-way, a left turn would prohibit that if they're coming in off Stockbury and lining up on Pennsylvania? 'Cause they could still come out.
Yeah, but it could be one-way, the other way.
Sure.
I, I mean, that's why I said, I don't know which way would be the proper way.
Well, I would love to see them build a second driveway and be done with this, so that's all I... But barring, they're adding to their code of conduct. That's their decision.
Well, as a minimum, I'd like council to consider that no-left turn just from a safety aspect.
You wanna hear from everybody and then?
We'll circle back around to it.
Okay. So, keep me straight. So this, we're gonna do a little different, because I know we wanna stay on this one issue. So we still have another item from council, but we'll go back to that later. So what we'll do right now is do citizens' communication on this one issue. If you, out of courteous to other, courtesy to others, if you wanna come on up to the podium, we just need your name, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less, and we'll talk just about this issue, so. I knew she'd take us up first on it, so, thank you.
Hi, I'm Jackie Glor, and I'm the one that started the petition, that kinda started the conversation about this. And I live on Carriage Point, in Carriage Point, on Pennsylvania, and I am in the part that is held hostage, meaning that the cars that come in to Carriage Point, and they turn to the left to go down Pennsylvania to exit on John Stockbury, they clog that entrance to where those of us to the right cannot get out. We're, we're just, we're just there. In the morning, I have to leave for work a full 20 minutes early to get to work on time, just hoping that somebody will give me a break to get in that traffic so that I can exit the neighborhood. You might say, "Why don't I just go all the way down Pennsylvania and exit on John Stockbury?" Because so many times, there's buses, as many as five, end to end, clogging the road, and then the bu, the cars that the students are bringing and parking on Pennsylvania and walking across to the school. So you can't get by, so you wait until somebody finally will let you out. And, and the other problem on my side of Pennsylvania is the kids that come in, they, they throw litter down. If our garages are open, they go right in. One of my neighbors, who was within her right to have her garage door open and a refrigerator in it that had Budweiser Longnecks, the kids went right in, opened the refrigerator, and were helping themselves, until a neighbor across the street saw it and took a flyswatter over and managed to run them off. I don't know why that flyswatter was so terrifying to them, but it was. And they put the beer back and they left, but they should never have been in that garage to begin with. They climb into the trees, they climb up on our fences, they go through our mailboxes, and there's nobody over there to stop them. Now, that's just what happens on my end. There are others that might talk about what goes on on the left side. But it's more than that. We're talking about Carriage Point today, but it affects every neighborhood that has children that go to East High School, because they are the ones that are in those cars that are parked along the side. They're waiting for their kids. They do not want to spend anywhere from 50 minutes to an hour and 10 minutes to pick up their kids by getting in that line, and those are estimates I've gotten from the parents that are in those cars. And let there be no mistake about this, this is not an us against them. That is a public road, paid for by public taxes. Anyone has a right to be there. I would defend that. They do not have the right to back into my driveway and not let me park on my property. They do not have the right to park on the street in front of my driveway where I cannot get into my driveway, nor do they have the right to park behind my car where I can't get out, and that is a common occurrence. But I do defend their right to be able to, to pick up their child somewhere else that's on the road if they're not bothering anybody. But the fact is, they are, and if we ask them to leave, they curse at us. They make obscene hand gestures to us. They point out to us that it's a public road and we need to mind our own business, and we're tired of it. And we're not asking you to do one particular thing. We're just asking you to do something. We so appreciate the fact that you have, have a table that you've allowed us a seat to come to, to talk to you about this. And, and we're, we're hoping that with the partnership between the city and V I S D and anybody else that wants to help us, that this problem will eventually be solved, and I appreciate very much your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Glor, but do you have any opinion on the one-way or any of the left-turn restriction? Have you thought about that? I know it's, you've just probably heard some of it, but...
I, I do have an opinion about it. It's already, so many of us are not going down Mockingbird to turn in there, because we know that there's gonna be a roadblock, and we're going down Salem and hitting the loop and coming down, and then coming the other direction to turn... coming down and then coming the other direction to turn in, just to try to get in. And if we've already made the big block all the way around and we get there, then we can't turn in. That might be an issue. At the same time, I'm one that was turning, I thought I finally had a clear passage to turn when two high schoolers on their cell phones walked right in front of my car and I almost hit those two kids. And that's what brought me into this fight to begin with. So can we do something to keep those kids safe? The litter, the fighting, the trees, the whole thing, that will pale compared to having children hurt and I do not want to be a part of that. So whatever y'all decide, I will support it.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, one thing that clicked with me when she was just talking about the buses and everything, you know, you can go straight across from the high school into Carriage Point. So at the time of the day, they could be crossing over, when you were saying you only, you know, you don't, you want to restrict the left-hand turn during certain times, it's still not going to prevent that traffic from going across from the high school. You see what I'm saying?
Exiting high school property and cutting across?
Because they can go, they can leave the high school property and go directly cross to Carriage Point.
And what would be the point of that?
Well, I'm just saying, if, I don't know, she was talking about those buses. I don't know.
I don't know what the buses are doing in the neighborhood, but the buses, I wouldn't expect to be cutting through. They're probably dropping off kids.
That was changed. That was fixed. The school district changed that a year or two ago. There were buses queued, cutting, and they rerouted them. Right, okay, Ms. Glor shaking her head. I remember that. But the district did reroute the buses out, so anyway. Citizens' communication is still open if anyone wants to come up and talk about this particular issue now. Surely I thought we'd get more takers on this one. Okay, okay. Oh, we do, okay.
The no-left turn is a brilliant, oh, I'm sorry, David Peters. I lived at 1015 Pennsylvania. The no-left turn is a brilliant idea. It's very dangerous to try to make a left turn there, especially when the cars are backed up to try to turn right into, turn their left into the, if you're coming from the loop, because you cannot see that other lane, that through lane. So it's going to happen there, no doubt. The sooner the better that gets done, the better off it's going to be, because it's going to come. It's going to happen.
At a restricted time?
Yeah.
Yes. The no, I do have vehicles that I do park on the street. My daughter parks on the street and there's different times that she gets off and so there would have to be some kind of parking permit system there. And I'm not the only one. There are a lot of cars that basically do their right to park on that street because they live there. And it was just kind of glazed over that students actually park on the street and they go and they walk across Mockingbird and they go to school and then they come back and get in their cars and leave at the end of the day. In other words, they are not parking in school property. They're parked on the street. Everybody seems shocked by that, but they do. They walk that quarter-mile, half-mile from our street to the, to the school. They do that. I don't know if they required to have a permit at the, at the school. Maybe somebody can answer that.
Yes, there's a student parking permit.
They have to have a permit. So instead of applying for the permit, they'll park on the street.
Well, you know, I'll be real blunt. In my day, kids did that because they had stuff in their car they didn't want to be found by authorities on campus. That's not always the case and I'm not, I'm being honest.
No, it's true. I was thinking about that.
Maybe, maybe we can walk a dog around them one day.
Yeah.
It's not illegal for them to park a car on a public street as long as they're not blocking a sidewalk interfering with the flow of traffic.
I'm just questioning why somebody would park there and walk that half a mile.
I understand. But just for the public to know that it's not illegal, as long as they're not leaving it longer than 24 hours.
And there's also a crosswalk that goes nowhere. In other words, the sidewalk is on the right-hand, as you come from the school, it's on the right-hand side of the street. And when you get to the intersection, there's no crosswalk there. The crosswalk is a cross on the other side. And that is a constant. It's like ants. As soon as one crosses, they all cross there and that's not a crosswalk. And it's very clearly marked, it's not a crosswalk. They do it anyway. That's a dance right in front of that blocked lane that we're talking about there. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for reminding us about that crosswalk, because that was pointed out to me. And you're taking notes.
Donald is too.
Okay, citizens' communication still open on this particular issue? If anybody would like to, okay, I don't want to cut anyone off. Good discussion, okay. What we're going to do is we're going to go back in, we're going to close citizens' communication, go back into items from council now. And, yes ma'am.
What was the school board's reaction? You said you've spoken to several of them. You told us what you'd said, but you didn't tell us if they had any responses.
I don't, I don't think, it would be fair for me to say they had a specific, you mean regarding the discipline?
Right.
I don't, I don't want to speak.
Just regarding the whole issue.
Did we close, we closed citizens' communication?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. So we're back into items from council now.
I thought we were coming back to it.
Yes, we are. We can talk about whatever under items from council for sure. You mean the whole issue? Well, you know, I.
I thought we were still talking about the Victoria East.
Yes, Miss Ma'am, we are. I'm trying to think of what, how I want to answer you, you know.
But one, it wasn't a school board. You did individual and you got some individual.
I've talked to three on the phone, to one in person and two on the phone. And I was a bit animated with one or two of them about how I felt about the fact that I don't want to hear it's the city's problem to fix. It's very annoying to me. Now, we will, we've offered solutions and attempts and we all have our opinions, but it's just year after year, it's the same thing. And I just stressed to them that I would like to see them make this a higher priority, just like any citizen can do to their school board member, make it a higher priority. Now, I know they're in financial dire straits. I get that. I don't like it, but it is what it is. And hence my, my thought to take the drama out of it and say, well, if you can get a little money from the county and maybe we can get a little money, we can help. Again, that's up to y'all, not just me. They listened, you know, no conclusions, so if that's an answer to you.
Thank you.
Would better, a second entrance, better access, would that solve the Carriage Point problem? Or are those two different problems? Just a question?
I think it would. You know, it's interesting what I hear. We had some people go drive through there and it's not an hour. I can't remember the times, but if you ask the people sitting in Carriage Point waiting to pick up their son, they'll tell you it's an hour, an hour and 10 minutes. I know somebody that went through there and timed it all and it wasn't that long. So you get different perceptions, different answers. I think it would solve it. Yes, sir, a second.
I don't know if it'll solve it. I think it'll alleviate some of the crush.
Can't hurt.
And when I said my 45 minutes, that wasn't picking up, because picking up is, it can be longer depending on who you talk to, who showed up early to sit in the front of the line, or who's 15 cars back and the first people's kids didn't come out and you're still just stuck there. But dropping off, it's a constant flow. Kids just getting out of the car, kids just getting out of the car and it was 45 minutes by the time you get in the queue to.
You're talking about West.
Yes.
There's two campuses there, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
The people I, they were.
But I do recognize it's probably 20, 25 minutes on average when I pick up.
And they staggered.
It just stinks and it's a, it's a long line for Victoria. In other towns, it's probably not, it's probably tolerable because you're used to it.
I'm always amazed at what people will do to avoid traffic. And Loop 463 is one good example of that. I think Placido Benavides will prove to be that same way, that they'll go clean over all the way to Salem to avoid going down Navarro. And it's just what we find when we work with issues on E M P O. Engineering answer might say you'll divert this many cars. The reality never seemed to follow the engineering solution, because what do people do to avoid a little bit of traffic? I think a second entrance would make a great prob, you know, solution to it. I'm still concerned on how we're actually going to do this and so on and where the money might come from. More than willing to help if we can. I am slightly concerned that the mistake that was made way back till it has never been acknowledged. And that would not be the criteria for fixing it. It still needs to be fixed.
I still, do you think there's enough agreement up here to have the city put up a no-left turn during the appropriate school hours of pickup and delivery or pickup and drop off?
I would agree.
I mean, if it doesn't work, let's take it back down.
Yeah, I was going to say.
One, I don't think it would hurt. I have another problem and I agree with Ms. Garrett and the fact that it's public property and we can park everywhere, but that neighborhood was there a long time before that school was. I live downtown. People park everywhere at Boot Fest and I get it. Take Boot Fest every day. And that becomes a hardship that they didn't ask for. It kind of got thrown in them, but that's the reality of it.
And I'm not disagreeing with the irritation of the neighbors. I'm just pointing out that legally it, I don't want the public to believe that that's illegal for them to do that. That was my only point on that.
Correct. But I don't know the volume of cars parked there. And if that is an issue, is there another way around it?
Second entrance and exit?
Well, and that may take care of some of it, but if we can't force that upon them.
Yeah, well, it's up to the citizens to do it.
Well, and, and you know, we did go in after, you know, the school was open and we saw the traffic issues. We put in the traffic signal. We did the no parking on Carriage Point and, you know, so, and Donald's wanting to get up. So if you want to get up, go ahead.
He may be, he may be about to say the same thing I'm about to say. I believe that before we could change that traffic flow.
Oh, we'll need to do a study.
Warrant.
Well, I don't know about the warrant study. I'm concerned about the traffic ordinance. We have an ordinance that controls things like speed limits and no parking.
We can modify.
I would also recommend we do a traffic flow study before we just even come back with an ordinance deal and look at that.
The conversation was turning into just have the city go out there and put up a sign. And I want to be clear that there are preliminary steps that would have to happen before that could.
Both of those are good points. The other point I want to make is that putting up a sign is one thing, but I'll also have to see if it's possible to take that left turn signal out while at the same time leaving the other signals operational. It may be, it may not be. I just, I just don't know.
I don't think there's a dedicated left turn there.
Is there not a dedicated left?
There's not a lane.
There's just four lanes on that road. It's not a, not a protected left.
Okay. I just couldn't remember for sure, so.
But you have a certain amount of time to cycle every light.
Right.
And when you add a cycle, it shortens the others and it has dynamics.
Yeah, it's going to change that pattern quite a bit. So I just need to, I'd like to time to look at it.
Well, what pattern would you be changing?
Well, you've, you've got, you've got a whole cycle there. So at some point, you're, and again, I need to look at it because I haven't given it that much, that close a study, but you're, it may not affect it at all, Councilman, but I would like time to look at it before we just say, let's throw a sign up there, if that's okay with you.
That's understandable. I just don't think, there's no time that I've noticed where one side's green and the other one stays red so you can take a left. It's both are green on both flows of traffic. So it's just, you can't take a left at that.
Yeah. Again, if you just give us a time to look at it, that'd really be good.
Do y'all need to do counts? Put the little rubber hose and do traffic counts too? Is that what you, somebody said study?
Warrant study?
I'm sorry?
A warrant study?
I don't know that the warrant study is the right thing to do. I think we just need to get out there and we really need to look at it and maybe have somebody that has a little bit of more experience with traffic engineering, maybe take a look at it.
Are people making lefts coming west? Are they making lefts from Mockingbird into, into the high school?
Yes, and that's all queued up. You can't see past that to, to get into Carriage Point safely.
But it's not only that. It's also blocking Carriage Point people if they're trying to go straight across and you've got somebody trying to make a left at the same time, you're all going to hesitate if there's an opening. So it may not just be the left into Carriage Point that's the problem. It may be the left into the high school that's, depending, I don't know how many cars.
Now, the tough part of turning left into the high school is they're queued up to take a right into the high school all the way down Mockingbird.
Right.
So there's never a time, since it's not a protected left, to really sneak in.
So people aren't going to likely do that.
No. It's a deterrent because there's so many people turning right into the parking lot.
We should encourage carpooling. It helps.
You just did. How, how long do you need to get some information, bring back to us?
You can give us maybe the next, not, not the next council meeting on the 30th, but the one after that, I can probably have something.
November 6?
November 2nd.
Okay.
And you know, y'all have heard me say this before. I feel like I have to say it again. We can do all this, but we can't change everybody's behavior. And you know.
These are the only tools we have to try to modify behavior.
Encourage, but it's, no matter what we do, we cannot change everybody's behavior. So, but we'll look at it.
But we'll try.
You think?
We'll make every attempt we can to make it better for those residents in Carriage Point.
Well, I think too though, and whether, it's not scientific at any means, but I think 90, high 90% of people want to follow rules. And so I think if people understand that the headaches it's causing, hopefully someone will take note and change their behavior too, so.
Did you mean November 6 for our next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
He was talking about the one after.
No, he meant the one after the 30th, so it's November 6 is the meeting.
Three weeks time.
Yeah.
Okay.
He just didn't think it could be ready for the 30th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're ready to move on?
Let me get a sip of water.
Okay.
My smart water helped me with this.
You're smart, yeah. I'm going to pass that around. Okay, go ahead.
Sidewalk ordinance. I wanted to visit this because it started with noticing that property that's being developed at the Willow Street wastewater treatment plant didn't have sidewalks on it. And I know that other constituents have come to me complaining that they had to put sidewalks in their places when they changed use or did whatever. So I started under that premise, wanting to look at it and actually it started a couple of months ago and talked to Mrs. Garrett. And I thought maybe in the U D C review and update that maybe we could cover it there, but it just, that seems to just be slow and steady. But I was going to hopefully get something in front of y'all first. There are reasons why and it's a good email that Mrs. Garrett sent out to us, kind of explaining how staff arrives at a decision on whether a property gets a sidewalk or not. And certainly if you look at Willow Street location out there, it's a tough place. What would you do with a sidewalk out there? You drive by there, it's like, just sidewalk to nowhere.
And it's open ditches.
And it's open ditches, which disqualifies, you know, you can get a relief from sidewalks on that, that basis alone. But the other thing that a couple of months ago had come up was when someone provides an addition to a building, an existing building, the way I understand the ordinance, and I could not find it this week, I should have asked for some help and I apologize for not getting it. But if you add an addition to any existing building and your property doesn't have a sidewalk around it, you are now required to install sidewalks. So this particularly came up with that addition to harbor freight is less than 5,000 square feet and that building's got to be at least 100,000 square feet. Very small percentage increase in square footage, but the way our ordinances are written, it triggered the requirement to have sidewalks put in where they're missing along Navarro and along Crestwood. Planning Commission gave a variance for Crestwood because within three years, that's already been budgeted for, or planned to be in the budget to redo that road and add sidewalks along that. Along Navarro, there's tons of gaps along there. That little 5,000 square foot addition, you know, ended up costing multiple tens of thousands of dollars in sidewalk. I would like to see the ordinance changed where that trigger point on additional square footage would be based on a percentage of the overall, just like when you're looking at code updates after a hurricane that we just had and whether you had to go to the full new code, kind of depending on if you're more than 50% destroyed. Why are we pushing newer codes on places when we're not even adding just a small little area to a large building? I look at it as the same requirement. And if we could come up with some percentage of that square footage, if it's, if you're adding more than 30% to a building, 40%. of that square footage, if it's, if you're adding more than 30% to a building, 40%, whatever everybody thinks is logical, then that would trigger that provision for sidewalks. What I'm trying to do is I get, I've been getting a lot of feedback, and it's probably because of the industry I'm in, construction industry, that a lot of developers are finding it difficult to get through some of our requirements for building and the excess cost that are incurred in the building. I don't necessarily think that it's different than other cities, other larger cities, and it's probably that we're getting, the codes have gotten worse, the cost of buildings just gotten worse, a lot of it has to do with that, but I still want to make Victoria a place where people want to develop and want to build on. It scared me after that with Harbor Freight, because I really would like to add to my warehouse space at my facility, but if I do, now I'm required to have a sidewalk in front of my place.
You'll get exempt because it's on Crestwood.
I know, but it's on Crestwood, I know it's gonna get one, but I wouldn't feel.
Because we're going to build them already, it'd be clear.
But I don't, I wouldn't feel right at this point going in front as a city council member, asking for a variance on a sidewalk.
You're a citizen too, though.
I know, but.
Could I ask for clarification?
Yes, sir.
I didn't think, I thought it was a percent of the whole, not the percent of one single building, or one portion of a big building.
No.
Learning something new every day myself, that doesn't seem correct either.
See, what was so strange about that one too, well, there's more strange things, that that used to be the, the outdoor garden building.
Yes, yes, it was.
Right, so it already had the pad there, so was it really already part of the building or not?
That, that is odd, um.
Do you think it would be, of course, I tend to make things complicated because I'm always trying to fit a square peg into a round hole, should it be on projects of a certain size, or you took maybe all projects?
I don't know, I mean, you look at.
I just wonder.
My buildings may be 9,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And if I wanted to add to it 2,000 square feet, I mean, as a percentage of, what's, you know, I just think it needs to be a percentage of.
Yeah, well, when in an old city like this, you, you know, you can go like a history lesson, go from the south to the north, you see the effects of changes over time, and there's a lot of small buildings where there might be a 1,200 square foot retail space, you know, with 40-foot a width for a sidewalk, do you exempt everything under 2,000 square foot? And, you know, I don't know, I'm just curious about that, that's interesting, it, it's difficult, we're never gonna find the perfect fit.
Nope.
But there might be warrant change.
You know, the recent thing about Sears vacating their place, that's a fairly large square footage piece, is that gonna trigger new requirements for other things?
Which one?
The Sears and Roebuck location, which is recently in the paper this morning, that they're gonna be vacating that space, and you're gonna have to, is that gonna trigger any new requirements? See, if it was a percentage of the whole, Harbor Freight is leasing that, they don't own that building, so if that one whole building is owned by one landlord, I'm wondering why it would have triggered. I'm missing something here, I'm not sure I have heard the whole story.
I thought I was too.
Would you consider, Ms. Scott, do you?
Well, as in a lot of these land use discussions, you've got the, the clash between the property owner who sees their project in a vacuum, and you see the city's vision of having sidewalks that are connected, and so if we do it as a percentage, there's a great big loophole, all right, well, I'm just gonna do 4,999 square feet, and then as soon as I get that going, I'll do another 4,999 square feet, I'll be exempt, and the city doesn't get what their, what their object is, that's what planning and that's what these ordinances are all about.
I think that you could tie it back to the original platted footprint of the building.
Back to the original.
Platted.
Before I started. Well, that.
It's of record.
I, I think if you do that, then we might as well stop trying to make any changes.
Well, there's gonna be, there's a point, no, there's a point that.
It's, it's like the mayor said, you can see from north to south, and so North Victoria or anywhere that hasn't developed yet will be completely different if you're wanting to tie that.
There's only so much space that you can increase, it's not like you could, adding 50,000 square feet to that building would be very difficult, you're just gonna run out of space, you know, so I, I think that it, it makes a sense, makes sense to me at least, to have some percentage where it's not gonna trigger everything. It has to be done.
Yeah, off the cuff, what percentage do you think, are you thinking, I'm curious, I don't.
I, uh, it's gonna be somewhere between 25 and 40%, I hadn't thought about it, I mean, that little addition was 5%.
Yeah. So conservative number would be a lower percent, that's pretty aggressive, 25, 40, yeah.
I think code, code upgrades aren't required until you get past 50% of your total loss of your building.
Yeah.
So I'm looking at this, this is a code upgrade.
Well, who did pay for the sidewalks that are on Navarro then, was it the landlord or the leasing?
The landlord did.
Okay. Curiosity.
Maybe the leasing contributed, you know, indirectly.
Over time, maybe.
Yeah, I don't know, in the rent, whatever, I'm just saying it. Yeah, yeah, it's why we all get paid such good salaries, to make these decisions, and, and to compare, just a minute, I'm sorry, but, you know, a lot of times we go and want to know what other communities do, and something like this, it's more of a reflection of community standard, you know, you might go to Fort Bend and Sugar Land, and, well, they demand those sidewalks, here it's a little different. I have to say one thing, though, I have to kind of chuckle, recently, a builder I won't name, that he mentioned he's built in six communities now, and by, when he was here, just building here, you may know who I'm talking about, he used to give us a really hard time, and he's, now he says we're the easiest he's ever developed in, in terms of getting things done, and so I just had to throw that out there, but, I'm sorry, go ahead, did.
No, I, would it be all right to have the planning department look at that specific portion of the ordinance and come back with maybe a revision of, say, 25%? And we can debate that percentage at that time when it's in front of us, and amend it as see fit or not pass it.
I'm good with that.
Absolutely.
Well, they have been very good about giving us the pros and cons, views of these things as you bring them to us, that would probably be a very good way to handle it.
Okay. Thank you.
No, I just wanted to make a comment, if you don't mind. I know, you know, I've been around a long time, and John's been around a long time, he's been around longer than I have, but, you know, we, we go this ebb and flow on sidewalks, on, you know, citizens want us to have sidewalks, and they don't, you know, and then, okay, developers don't want us to have sidewalks, so we go this ebb and flow, and, and over the last several years, there's been that comment about we need to do more sidewalks and connectivity, so, and that's, that's where we're at on that ebb and flow, so, just, you know, comes and goes.
And I don't disagree with that, it's just, to me, in my mind, it's hard to reconcile when you have someone that doesn't change the square footage of their building, but they do a total remodel on the place, make it look fantastic, but they're not required to put in that sidewalk, older building just adds a little small bit to it, and it triggers sidewalks.
I understand.
Every, yeah, it's hard to fit every situation, yeah, a couple of pedestrian fatalities, and the whole community changes.
Okay, I just have one little question.
Yes, ma'am.
We're talking about only commercial, where it applies to commercial, not residential? Are they two different variant, I mean, ordinances for each one?
I don't know about ordinances, but we, this particular case, we're talking about commercial redevelopment, yes, ma'am.
Okay. But it doesn't apply to residential, it's totally different?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
What Mr. Bolt Knight's talking about is.
Right, because what I had asked about was residential.
Yes, yes, ma'am, and on those cases too, it's just for clarification, and I'm sure John and Julia both help, but, you know, they can seek a variance from having to do the sidewalk, or they can seek a waiver, and, you know, in some cases, like I mentioned, even though Willow is a commercial, with the open ditches, you know, they have a waiver, and so they sign that agreement that says, you know, basically whatever, you know, becomes curb and gutter, or there's other sidewalks around, they have to go back and do their sidewalk at that time, they're just, there's a stay on that, so, but I know we spoke about some mobile home lots where, yeah, sidewalks were needed, so, and, and Julie in Development Services looks at the area to see, you know, is that gonna connect other sidewalks or not, you know, to make those determinations.
Okay, so if we know what we're gonna do, then?
Yes.
We'll.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all for the time.
No other items from council? Okay, we'll go back to citizens communication, anyone who'd like to speak, I'll reopen that, you can come up now and talk about anything at all you'd like to talk about, just abide by the five-minute limit if possible. Okay, seeing no one jump up, we'll close citizens communication and we'll move into, we have some public hearings, some ordinance changes.
Item C1 is an ordinance amending Chapter 19 of the Victoria City Code relating to railroads to delete certain sections preempted by federal law, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
So we'll open the public hearing on C1, if anyone wants to speak to this particular item alone, now would be the time. Okay, seeing no one get up, we'll close the public hearing on C1, and I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, okay, ayes have it, C2.
C2 is an ordinance replacing Chapter 14 of the Victoria City Code to update requirements pertaining to occupational licenses, taxes, and regulations, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for publication, enforcement, codification, and savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C2, if anyone would like to speak to that item. Now's the time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing on C2, entertain a motion.
Take a motion to approve C2.
Second. We have a motion second, or there's discussion, is there discussion?
I have a question. On game rooms, do the gaming machines that are in convenience stores need a permit?
It's a complicated answer. The answer is, any building that has even one machine has, is required to have a game room permit, however, there's an exception for a business that earns more than 50% of its income from something other than games, did I state that right, April? Okay, and so the short answer, to simplify all of that, is no, they don't.
Okay, that's state law?
No, that's our local code. With regards to state law, if you're asking whether or not those entities are required to have the comptroller's occupational permit or the, or pay the tax on those machines, honestly, I didn't research that question, I'm not sure.
I believe they are still required to have the, the coin-operated amusement machine sticker from us as well as the state, I know they are from us, I believe they have to have it from the state as well.
So it would be posted on the front door?
Yeah, but there are two different permits, you have to understand, there's a game room permit, and then there's the coin-operated machine permits.
Okay.
So.
Then more than likely, you would just see the coin-operated.
Yeah, the coin operator would be a sticker actually on the machine.
On the machine?
On the machine, and some, a lot of times they put them on the back, so sometimes you don't really see it on the front.
Okay.
I would like to ask regarding the game rooms, the changes, someone to go through the highlights of that, I was gonna actually wait till C3, but this is probably a better time, either you or the chief, or I'm.
I'm happy to do that, chief, unless you want to.
I have a question.
He's waving to let me do it.
For the chief, but it'll be, you can wait a minute and.
Sure.
What are we changing?
I'm gonna go through.
Plain terms.
I'm as plain as I can.
Don't teach a law class.
I'll try.
Okay.
There, there are a lot of changes, though, and I'm gonna run through the bullet list that's in the CM1, that's the document, the name of the document, that's kind of the, the background summary that's attached as part of the packet, I know that the newspaper this morning referred to the council packet, and that's the papers we all have here. Game room permits are gonna be issued under the new ordinance to business entities rather than individuals, to try to prevent some of the abuses that the chief was describing, where individuals, not necessarily related to the business, would come in and try to get the permit for the permutee, so the applicant will be a natural person who applies and has to sign a statement saying they know what's going on in that building, but the permutee, the permit will be issued in the name of a business, that'll allow us to check Secretary of State records to see who's associated with that business, it'll also allow us to check the comptroller's department to make sure that they have their permit, their permits necessary for them. Both the applicant and the property owner who is leasing property to the game room will be required to sign the application, including a certification that they understand what's going on in the business, that is put in there in order to, for us to make sure that the property owners understand that there's criminal liability attached to that, both in our city code and under state law, property owners can be held criminally liable for gambling violations in their business, and so we want to make sure they're aware of that before they allow a game room to go into their property. Third, game room permit applications will be required to include diagrams of the space, including the parking spaces, in order to help the code division determine how many gamer, excuse me, how many games machines are allowed to be in that space, we have specific parking requirements based on the number of machines in that space, so if there's limited parking, they'll only be able to have a limited number of machines. The permit application has to be accompanied by the occupational tax receipt from the state comptroller's office showing that the game room has actually paid their state occupations tax, that does two things for us, number one, it makes sure that they are compliant with state law, secondly, we will limit the number of machines available under our city permit to the number of machines that they have paid the taxes for, so that we're aligned with what the state has allowed. Fourth or fifth, whatever number I'm up to, there's a process created for the chief of police to administratively suspend those permits, under the current regulation, the chief couldn't suspend those permits until there was an actual conviction of a gambling offense or some other offenses, and as we all know, the court system moves very slowly, so this would allow the, the chief to suspend until the end of the calendar year that game room permit upon certain evidentiary showings. And then finally, the game room permits, permutees are required to post signs, both on the door of the building saying that this is a game room, and then at any location where they are paying out to customers, they have to post a sign that says gambling is a crime, and if you're paid more than $5 per, per play, you could be arrested and jailed for that offense, so that is of course designed to discourage illegal gambling, and the mayor points out, there's, that it rolled to the second page, so there is actually one more, thank you, because I know the police officers were interested in us prohibiting private memberships for game rooms, some game rooms were using that as a way to keep out law enforcement or keep out people that they didn't want or that they didn't trust in there, so this will make it easier for us to enforce our regulations. I'll answer any other questions there are.
I have a question on that last point, if somebody locks the doors to their game room and just lets the people they know in, is that going to be something that they're gonna be violating as far as this is concerned?
Yes, ma'am, I would, I would consider that to be a membership-based system.
Well, it's not because it's membership, it's because they're, you know, just to keep fragrance out and to keep people out that just come to eat and just leave.
I think the question at that point is going to be whether or not this is a facility open to the public, or whether it's a private, a private residence, if this is a commercial enterprise that's open to the public and they're only locking the doors so that they let in the people they want, that's a membership, if this is a, a machine that somebody has set up in their living room, that's a private situation.
I have a really simple little clerical or typo, but I think it's gonna result in an amendment, and it's 1480D, as in dog, there's a spot, four lines from the bottom that uses the words, well, it starts with response to such application for an event outside the 30-day window shall be condition upon provision, the rest of that section talks about a 60-day window, so I think that's a, an error, and if anybody else besides me can find it, I will make a motion that that section be amended so that the word 30-day window be changed to 60-day window.
And, and I agree with what she's saying, that is a typographic error, that was just a failure to catch that change, we're talking about carnival permits, and how long, how much of a lead time the carnival needs to give the Parks Department when they apply for that permit, and we changed it to 60 days in that paragraph, and we missed one reference to 30, so she's clarifying, so just for consistency's sake, and was that a formal motion?
That was a formal motion.
Okay, that was a. Okay, that was a motion.
Second.
Okay, let's get that out of the way. We have a motion and a second to amend the ordinance.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's highlighted.
Okay, Section 14-80, where the, where it refers to 30 days, should say 60 days.
Okay. Everyone understands? And we have a motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same, okay, ayes have it.
You can go back to discussion now.
So as we understand this, everybody that's, has a game room right now and operating under the rules, but come January 1st, as they re-permit, then they will be subject to the new rules that are in place here.
That's correct.
Okay.
All of the existing permits expire December 31st. That was the situation under the prior law, and it will be the situation under the, what's being considered now. And so as of January 1st, all game rooms will have to have new permits, and they will be subject to the new regulations.
And one of the things that April does, early November, after this is adopted on the second and third reading, she will send letters out to current permit holders and share with them the ordinance changes and everything.
Does that create any kind of logistical problem if all of the permits expire at the same time? As opposed to having them be a 365-day permit?
We, we do try to send letters out early. We're holding them a little bit later this year simply because of these changes coming forth, so we want to be able to capture all the changes and mail letters or memos to our, our renewers. Even though we send those letters out, there are very few come in early. They all tend to wait till the last minute, and I'm not just talking about game room permits, I'm talking about everyone. The, they all tend to wait till the last minute, and there's nothing we can do about that. We're just very busy that last week of December. It, they, some of the ones that do tend to come in earlier are gonna be like your corporate companies, like Chuck E. Cheese, they're always gonna mail me their stuff early, because that's a big corporation, they want it done early. But, you know, most individuals or local businesses tend to wait till the last minute. Some of them that require background checks have learned to come in early.
Mrs. Scott's question, though, April, was, instead of having it, everybody's expired on December the 31st, do you run it 365 days?
If I can add on some to that answer as well, the occupational licenses and stickers issued by the state of Texas are also a calendar year base, and so this helps us align with that.
Okay.
And, but I don't think it's, y'all, you, you're able, with your staff, you're able to process it, that's.
The only permit that we have that does not expire then is our tow truck one, and it's in the middle of the summer, so. And that's a longer process, so it helps that.
Long and short of that, she's awesome.
There you go.
We agree with that.
Her and her staff, absolutely.
We just never take off.
Okay, I wanna throw in a little bit here on this, on the game room situation. I wanna repeat a few things, make them crystal clear. If you own a property and you rent to someone, it's gonna come in and set up a game room. And I'm gonna read from the ordinance. The person who signs, have to sign the following acknowledgement. And I'm gonna quote from the ordinance. "I own the property described in this application, and I have actual knowledge of the proposed or current operation of a game room on my property. I acknowledge that I may personally be held criminally liable for illegal activity associated with the game room on my property." That's pretty powerful, okay? Now, the next page. Administrative suspension, and chief, that's where I want to ask you a question. And this is pretty powerful. You or your designee has the ability to suspend a permit on an operating game room if you have evidence that there's a violation of law. You can do that for how long? A day, a week, a month, the rest of the year, right?
Rest of the year, yes.
Now, if you'd had this, for example, since January of this year, and it's now October, and give me a yes or no, would there have been some suspensions of some game rooms in this city?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I make that clear and say it clear here, and I don't know if there's any game room operators here, but it's very serious now, and it is a big change. And I think all of you have had phone calls about the game rooms. I am not against game rooms, I don't think you guys are. We just want them to operate legally. But I've had some of the most bitter communications with constituents over game rooms in the last couple of years, I'm kinda tired of it, I guess, you know? But, so we have to put some teeth in this, and that's what we're doing. You guys, staff, all worked on this and gave it a lot of thought. So it's time to, if you have a game room and you're operating legally, great, enjoy it. Citizens can go enjoy that, but if you're not, these guys are gonna be watching, am I true?
True.
Okay. I'm just saying, this has some real teeth in it, so let's see how it works. I'm glad, I appreciate the results that y'all brought us.
One point I want to make, there is due process.
Yep.
If you are suspended, and you have a way to challenge, go through, look at that evidence.
There is a process.
Right?
That's right.
So if you are not guilty.
It's not an arbitrary process, it, it's based on evidence.
Yep.
Based on evidence and that due process is that they will have an opportunity to come in and meet.
Defend themselves.
Yeah, present evidence that they are in fact complying with law.
Okay.
Yeah.
May I make a statement?
Sure.
Talking more than normal. Chapter 14, as you looked at that, you know, one of the things we've been working on for the last several years is cleaning up, going through and reviewing all of our city codes. So instead of just doing the game room portion, staff had been working on Chapter 14 before the hurricane. So there's changes in Chapter 14. There's one article that we did not get to, to make changes on, and that's Article 8, the utility companies. And I know Thomas has got to do some work on that from a legal standpoint, but we, we knew the game room was important, we did not want to hold up getting this Chapter 14 back. So you'll see some updates to Article 8 in the future, so there was no changes in Article 8. There was some, looks like grammar change, grammar changes, but otherwise than that, so we'll see 14 back, but we, you know, we looked at the food truck and the, you know.
Thank you, Sherman, for bringing that up. If I can expand on that a little bit, the entire statewide regulatory scheme for utilities has changed since our current code was adopted in 1960. And so there's a substantial amount of rewrite that needs to be done in that provision. And I've reached out to outside counsel who specializes in utility matters to help us put in place a local utility regulation that will actually mesh well with state law. It's a very complicated issue.
I'd also like to point out, Ms. Scott asked this question about the mobile food vendor. You know, under our current ordinance, mobile food vendors have to go see the health department, they have to come, go see the fire marshal's office, and then they have to come to the city secretary's office. The fire marshal graciously offered to, he could do the permit when they're there, and therefore they don't have to come downtown just to get a permit from the city secretary. She's not inspected, so that eliminates one step for those vendors. And you'll, you'll see that here on C2, and then when we get to the fees, that, the fee's not changing for the food truck, it's just moving under the fire marshal authority.
Thank you, I was gonna mention that. So we don't always make things harder, we're making it easier, that's, it's important to point that out. And before, I know C3 is the fee part, but because we were talking about the game rooms, I want to mention that right now, and of course, we'll get to that in a minute and vote on it. Did y'all notice that game room permit change fee?
Yes.
Okay? That's pretty serious. It's $25, it's going to $780 for game room permit fee, because we spend a lot of time dealing with them, and the police department spends a lot of time. And I asked for that. I asked, look for it, and let's find out what the true cost is. That is, the best estimate of cost is weekend, that is not exorbitant, we're not making that up. But the amount of time spent on this, that's what that reflects. So I want game room operators to take it very serious, what we're doing, and I think they will, so. Okay. C2, any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign, okay, ayes have it. C3.
C3 is an ordinance amending Chapter 24 to adjust certain fees related to obtaining permits, repealing all conflicting ordinances, providing for codification and savings, and declaring an effective date.
We'll open the public hearing on C3, if anyone would like to speak to that item, now would be the time.
My name's Rick Colley, we live in 305 Beechwood. I'm not sure, maybe, I may be out of orders, is C3, is this still concerning the, the game rooms? Or is that passed?
Yes, it's the fees, so yes, it's technically.
I've noticed two installations of game rooms just recently, my section of town. There's one on Houston Highway, used to be a restaurant there. It's between Sam Houston and, what would that be? Let's say Hospital Drive. It's on the north side of Houston Highway. I was surprised to see a game room put in there, it used to be a restaurant and was nice, nice business. Also, there's one I've noticed just recently, right borders our neighborhood on Tanglewood, it's on Teakwood Street. Brick, nice brick building, they've redone the parking lot, looks real nice. And I see a sign that says game room, but there used to be a prosthetics or orthopedic sometime, business there. And to see a game room placard or sign put on that nice building kind of surprises me. I mean, if they can do it well and make, make a go of it, you know, I don't like to see that encroaching into our neighborhood. Just, I appreciate the work that the city council is doing and the police to enforce the regulations and make it a little more strict, a little tougher for these, these businesses to start up. That's just my personal opinion, you have things about property values. I don't know if that really directly affects us or me, even though that's encroaching on my part of town. I just appreciate the work you're doing, because I think it's important. Personally, this may be controversial, but I'd like to see, discourage the proliferation of game rooms for many reasons, I'm not gonna get into it, I could, I could go on and on, but I don't have time for that. But I appreciate the work you're doing. I wish there was something other than game rooms at each of those locations, but free enterprise, if that's what people want, that's what they want, so. But, you know, just, that's all I want to say. Do everything you can to kind of discourage game rooms, that's just, that's, that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you, Mr. Colley. The public hearing's still open on C3, if anyone else would like to speak. Seeing no one get up, we'll close the public hearing on C3 and I'll entertain a motion. Move your adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, or is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. So the consent agenda, we can do the first three and then do four separate?
Sounds good. There is three items remaining on the consent agenda. D1 is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting of October 2nd, 2018. D2 is a resolution approving the purchase of an ambulance from Frazier Limited in the amount of $246,411, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the purchase and declaring an effective date. And D4 is a resolution awarding fiscal year 2018-19 grounds, maintenance, and mowing contracts for a maintenance landscaping services for various specified city properties to four local contractors in an aggregate amount of $152,199, authorizing the city manager to execute contracts with each awardee for this project and declaring an effective date.
We're gonna pull four, though?
I thought we pulled D3, I'm sorry.
We did D3. D3.
Did I say the wrong one?
Yes.
Forgive me. Okay, so we're voting on D1, 2, and 4?
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Take a motion to approve items D1, D2, and D4.
And I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on those items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Thank you, council. D3.
D3 is a resolution awarding the Placido Benavides Drive Extension Project to Triple B Services, LLP, for their low bid of $9,194,616.97, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
I move to.
Somebody make a motion.
I move to adopt D3.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and there's a discussion?
I asked for this to be pulled because this is a huge agenda item, and I wanted to applaud ourselves and the city for, for this. We're going to build a new road, this is a huge item, and I just, we can't get this information out enough. And so I'd like just to, if you would, Mr. Reese, to show us where it's gonna be and talk about it a little bit.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Scott. So the Placido Benavides Drive Extension is, find where the mouse is here. Starting here where the end of Placido Benavides Drive stops right now, close to Walmart, comes around through some vacant property and ties into Larkspur, right in this area, and then keeps coming down, and will eventually meet up down here to Salem Drive. This section is going to be initially built as a two-lane concrete strip. Will have LED lighting. Of course, the, the, all the wires for that lighting will be underground. Eventually, in years to come, we have enough right-of-way to make this a four-lane concrete when the traffic dictates that. But at this time, I don't really have an estimate on when that'll happen. And that's kind of the bulk of the project, there's quite a bit of drainage going in, drainage works to be done, we'll have water and sewer lines built in as this project goes in, so we don't have to do that in the future, it'll be built during this project.
And how long will it take to construct this?
This one is estimated at 420 calendar days. Hopefully, we can get it done sooner, it's gonna kind of depend on weather, though. That area out there is, is raw land, and I think the contractor, the first thing they're gonna have to do is, is get drainage out there, it's pretty flat. So once they get the drainage set, we should be okay. Yes, sir.
I noticed that the sign still shows Glasgow. When would we change the name at that intersection?
I'll have to, I'll have to double-check that, I know the, the sign on the Glasgow side of Navarro says Glasgow, but I thought on the, on the other side, it says Placido Benavides.
It, it does, traveling north on 77, it says Placido Benavides.
It does, okay.
Yes, yes, sir.
I stand corrected, then, thank you.
It's, it's small.
Okay, well, for listeners of the program, whoever's at board, Placido Benavides was the first mayor or alcalde of Victoria, 1824. So he's a significant, historical personage. And that's one of the reasons we named it for that.
I got a question, I noticed that a portion of this is to rebuild Salem Drive, that county road right there. Did, did county want to participate in this?
That.
That's in the city.
That section of Salem is in the, in the city.
I thought we were on the other side of, edge of it, we're on the other side of the road, different than what this shows.
What we're doing is actually in the city limits, so. Now, the land that abuts it on the south side is some of that land that we're seeking annexation.
So it'll all end up being in the city, the whole room?
Yes, sir, if y'all approve, well, it, it depends on if they do the management development agreement, since they're currently ag-exempt, you know, they, they can stay outside the city as ag-exempt until they develop.
Have we ever done business with Triple B Services?
Yes, we've used them before on a couple of projects. Ken, do you remember which projects we did? Triple B?
We've done several, the first phase of Laurent, West Tropical Drive, the little section of Red River between Main and Vine. They did John Stockbauer, they did the industrial park, Phase 2. So they've done a lot of concrete street projects.
So they did the Stockbauer the second time?
The, the south side, the, the second half, yes, it, yes.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was noticing the calendar days, it's almost double for Brandon, and then, you know, Lester was just a little bit more than the 420. It's just that. And that's important.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, our contracts also have penalties if they don't meet those deadlines, you know? We hope we don't get into that, but.
That's right, we, we hope we don't get into that, absolutely.
And try to keep your change orders to a minimum?
Yes, ma'am. As always.
And Donald, for, for the public, I mean, we're doing this road to alleviate traffic concerns, to be forward-thinking, correct?
Correct. Elevate some traffic issues there on, on Navarro.
I know some people have said, why are we building a road when there's other needs? But, but, but we also have to think down the line as well, or we get caught.
Absolutely.
Always other needs. It's always other needs, and everybody has an opinion, and, yeah. I can't remember, though, if we've ever, Tom, do you, you've been here? I can't remember, though, if we've ever, Tom, you, you've been here the longest. Have you ever, did we build a new road at any time? When's the last time we built a new thoroughfare? Anybody?
Well, perhaps that section of Ball Airport that goes between Glasgow and, is that Northside Road?
Northside, yeah.
Where Station Six is at.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a small, true.
And that's where the new forest station is, a latest forest station.
I think the one we got most criticized for was Lone Tree because it sat there for so long.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, this is, you know, some of the development that I was talking about earlier in terms of, this is a good way to direct growth, to put the utilities there so that it makes it an attractive area for development. It's the city being proactive, and I'm, I'm very, I said it's huge, but it's very exciting that we're doing this.
Yes, ma'am. It is an exciting project.
But, but this is very rare.
Yeah, a greenfield, just straight out, like, you know, so, okay. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay, ayes have it. So, where are we at?
Item E one. And mayor and council, we have a substituted version of E one as a non-substantive change, just to clarify the title of the document being adopted. And so, this is a resolution approving and adopting the emergency management basic plan for the city of Victoria and declaring an effective date.
I move...
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes. So, I'll say this is a mighty big document, 1,367 pages, I think. I didn't print out everything. I tried to review what I could online. I'm not that good at reviewing on the screen. Just, I did look through a couple of the sections in detail and print those out that I had brought up before in front of council, one being the Public Works and Engineering. And I apologize that I tried to make comments on it online or on the Adobe file, and I kept crashing it. I don't know why. But, so, I finally got them written down again for like the fourth time, and actually just used pen and paper. A lot of the Public Works and Engineering section has been changed. I like a lot of what has changed in it. It seemed, though, that most of it this time relates to debris management. And I didn't see where there was any addressing issues with water or water treatment, water towers that was previously in there. And I wonder, did it go to another section that I overlooked? Because we had specific items, like approaching storm, you want to, you know, fill your water towers to protect them. There were some specific items and steps in there, but they're not in here anymore.
I don't ever recollect that. Being in there, I think that was in a departmental plan with Public Works. I don't remember being inside the annex, if you're referring to the Annex L for utilities annex.
Yes.
And so...
Yeah, because this has turned into just mainly debris management. Right? And there's, there's a little bit, also found missing was anything to do with traffic control at intersections, stoplights, any mention of that in this section, which I consider, you know, Public Works, as we have it defined, it's the city of Victoria, is very large. And...
There is a section in evacuation annex, Annex E, that talks about traffic control that the law enforcement officials look at and develop a plan for that. That's in that annex as well. But if there's very specific items that council would like to have included in that, which is why we had the work session before, and we just need notes back from the council so that we can address it with those functional bodies, so they can include that into the plan, which is why we issued out the plan back in late May, early June, so we could get that.
So, you're saying that how we deal with what we all know right now as a hurricane event, and all, every intersection is without a functioning stoplights where we have them? You're saying that's now all in E?
No. So, if you're actually looking at tactical direction of things that are boots on the ground performed, those are going to be at the departmental level. Remember the plan, the basic plan and its associated annexes are a general guideline for which we do things in a large-scale, large-scope environment. Then, we tailor those down into the actual individual SOPs, GOPs, actual departmental procedures. Those are held at the department level. And the best thing I can tell you, it's like for the firefighter, they're not going to put in here exactly how they put the wet stuff on the red stuff every single time. Those things are held at the department level at their standard operating procedures. There's just general guidelines that the basic plan allows them to do. But if there are specific things, which is what we talked about six months to nine months ago, we need that information back from the council so we can give it back to those functional groups. We can say, these are the things that we need to have you include. So, what we did is we looked at our plan. It meets all the state standards. Sent it off to the state for a quick review. The state did come back with a, not a quick review, but a review of the plan and say, it looks like everything is, is online, where it needs to go. We're ready now for the council to give the approval for the mayor to sign. So...
But what I'm saying, the debris section of this and portion has been greatly updated and is very detailed. It's more of what I would expect if I was, if I was saying it's a plan. It's where possible lay-down yards for debris removal, what crews are responsible for debris removal. It's, but there's nothing else for any of the other public works to park?
So, once again, if, if there's concerns, we need to go back to the public works section, those functional bodies for the city and the county bull, give them the suggestions from the council and/or the commissioners' court and say, these are some things they want addressed. That's why we issued that out back in November, January, and then also in May to get those, that feedback back, so we could move forward on those things. If there are still items, then yes, we need to issue those back out to them, so that those functional bodies can look at that and give back the suggestions.
Okay.
Councilman Bach, there's, there's Appendix L is utilities, and Appendix K is Public Works and Engineering. And I think that some of what you're looking for, I'm not as familiar, but some of the water information, maybe an L instead of a K.
I might have looked that over then.
It's going to be an L, it's going to be in K, it's going to be in recovery. There's going to be some inside the annex. J for recovery. I know it pretty well off the top of my head, but I don't know it, the exact page numbers, but...
That's what I'm saying. The way I was reviewing it online, I could have missed. If it's in there somewhere else, fantastic, but I just want to make sure it's covered that we had some steps that we had already identified on what to do with the public water system as a storm approached or some event that could be predicted approached.
Sure.
And I want to make sure that still stays in there.
And many of those things are operated at the departmental level, and they're within their SOPs, their GOPs, and things like that. So, they identify those. So, once again, the basic plan is just for a general guideline to start that process, and then they look at those with city manager and say, okay, what do we need to identify more at our departmental layer and our, and that level? So...
Okay.
But the document did grow from 900 small pages to 13, and actually, we're getting ready to move that up several more pages as we include some more information in the next couple of weeks.
And I, I mean, it's a true statement. We shouldn't look at it as a static document.
No, it's not.
I mean, it can be dynamic. We can work on it any time. This, this action tonight is to make sure you approve me signing it, correct?
Yep.
Okay. But I would always encourage, I mean, if you're interested in the topic, which we all should be to some extent, it's always good to review it.
Well, I'll definitely, I can support you signing. I want to go through that utilities one, and that's my fault for not getting through it and really looking at it. Just missed that annex.
And those things specifically designed at the utilities, Public Works, feel free, we'll schedule a meeting. We'll sit down with, with Director Reese, and also with our representative from the county, which is Clint Ives, and sit down and look through those things and say, what do we need to focus in on more? So...
Okay. And the public information one, one thing that I noticed, and this is, you know, it's a general plan, but it doesn't say who's responsible. So, like, it talks about phases of management and mitigation preparedness, response, and it says develop and distribute educational materials. And who's, who's developing that? Where does it reside? Is it developed as the incident occurs? I know there's already speaking point templates and stuff, so, you know, if there's a tornado or whatever the event may be, there's already some talking points, fill-in-the-blank stuff to get information out. But what about these things that are identifying preparedness? Is that preparedness now, or is that preparedness defined as, okay, there's a storm in the Gulf, it's coming this way, develop something?
Well, it depends on which topic we're talking about. So, if we're talking about...
So, phases of management, develop and distribute educational materials, conduct public education programs. So, do we have those educational materials? Are we...
We do.
Who's responsible for them?
A variety, a variety of us. And so, everything from the firefighting annex, we'll talk about firefighting education.
But this is just public information.
For the public information piece of it. So, it depends on what...
This annex is supposed to develop and distribute educational materials.
Sure. So, we have a variety of educational materials within our office. When we go to our different presentations and talks, we provide a variety of brochures that we go along with that, coloring books, pamphlets. We do a insert into the UBO and also VECs, utility bills in May that talk about hurricane preparedness and checklist. So, there's a variety of things that we have out there, also inclusive of our presentations that we do throughout the year. So...
The PIO really is the one that makes sure all those materials are there from, whether it's a firefighting educational material or if it's public safety, it's the PIO's responsibility to make sure that they are housed and available at the EOC.
Sure. And then, if we also go into an, an event or an incident that we're actually working, public information officer works with those other functional bodies to develop those materials as well. And a lot of times, we already have them already on hand. Look at something like H1N1 outbreak or an influenza outbreak. The PIO would reach back out to the Department of State Health Services, gather up their information, materials, and distribute them out. And so, which is what we do. And so, we did that with synthetic marijuana. We did it with H1N1, you, you name it. And so, we do it for hurricanes and even severe weathers, which is why you folks probably get tired of seeing all my emails. So...
So, along that lines of educational programs, the PIO and the EMC are tasked, they shall conduct educational programs, which includes going to schools. And I'm sure y'all are tied in with VISD and those other organizations, public gatherings, speaking to Rotary or Lions Club or items like that, right?
This year to date, we're about 9,000 training hours. So, and that includes presentations, hosted, hosted trainings, conducted trainings. We met with a community group last night until eight o'clock, and 16 people in there. So, and VISD, on, on that end, we have them as a storm-ready community partner. We have that as, with Caterpillar as well. So, we're real close with what we do.
I found this, the public information one, very well done. A good example of, you could probably hand this to anybody and say, here's how you need to run the public information annex during an event.
Good job, OC.
Very well done, and a good plan laid out. One item that we had brought up before, I didn't see it addressed in here. I don't even know if it's possible. I'd mentioned when I was driving through Refugio County after Hurricane Harvey, and my cell phone had gone off and notify me that aircraft would be flying over spraying for mosquitoes. I don't know if that's something that we've still looked into as a possibility, as a way to communicate. And I don't know how that technology would even work. But that would be something I'd like to see added into the PI section so that, that technology possibility isn't lost.
Okay.
Do you want to go ahead and explain your SWIFT 911, though, or...
Sure. And so, SWIFT, we have a emergency notification system that we use. We cannot use a certain phrase for that. But it's an emergency notification system that we use currently. It's called SWIFT Reach 911. Actually utilized it today. We do a quarterly test now with that to our command staff to make sure that that system is up and operational. We also use it on, on a regular basis for events or, or incidents that might be occurring within our community. That gives us the capability to reach back out to registered cell phones, which we do a push for that throughout the years. The National Night Out, we handed out mini brochures on registration for the SWIFT Reach 911. We also have the capability then to touch landlines that are, that are not private. They're public open to landlines that we can grab that information from. We usually utilize, utilize that during Hurricane Harvey multiple times. And like I said, just even today, we utilize it for a bailout that was out on 59 and affected about 300 residents. And so, we can track that and look at how many calls went out, who received the calls, and if they actually listened to it and the duration that they actually listened to the call. So, we try to work with OC and the other public information officers on all the platforms. We have to look at that cross-cut representation within our communities and figure out, okay, what's the best way to get out the most information to the most people, whether it's print media, televised media, Twitter, Instagram, Facebook, you name it, we pretty much utilize it. So, and it gets really important as we ramp up into operational mode. So...
I think it's very important, though, to remind the public that if they have a cell phone, they need to register that cell phone?
Yes, ma'am. Very good point. And so, if you go to the city's website and/or the county's website, go to the emergency management link, there is a SWIFT Reach 911. We actually specifically sent that link to all the council members and commissioners, both, to say, if, if we're going to be leaders in our community, please sign up for this. And I think many of y'all have. And so, once again, we don't utilize that very often, and it doesn't go countywide. That's a lot of phones that we're touching at one time, and it's disruptive to people. But if we have an alert or warning information that needs to go out, we will utilize it. So, and I don't get to make that decision. That decision is made by the command staff and the policy group. So...
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank to, I want to say thanks to everybody that owns one of the annexes as well and is responsible for it. I know it's, it's a lot to go through.
A lot.
And I was taking a lot of time. I appreciate the effort everybody's put into it.
And once again, any additional comments or clarity that you need us to add to the plan, just let us know. We'll...
I will.
...look at those functional groups.
I'll find those that I missed, and I'll, if I have any questions, I'll, I'll shoot you an email.
It's light reading. It's, it's good.
Mrs. Garrett and Mr. Reese.
Okay. Anybody else?
If I can figure out how to comment on the Adobe document.
It's a big document. Okay. So, good discussion. Any further comments? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Okay. Thank you, Rick.
May I make one request? After we get full approval of it, may we make all the available parts public like we have before? I know that there's some sections you will, some sections you won't.
It's all, I think, isn't the redacted version already there?
Of the old one?
There is, there will be a redacted version of this one as well, based upon the Attorney General's opinion from several years ago. And that will be a policy, a group decision that will be, have to be handed down to us and given me the direction for it. I know the judge's stance on it. I need to get the mayor's stance on it and figure out what we want to do from there. But I will tell you, in my professional status, I believe there's some security-sensitive information in there that does not need to be made public.
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt.
Without a doubt. I'm aware of some of it. So, absolutely.
Yes. There are some annexes in there.
In the interest of safety for the citizens.
Very much so.
I'm fine with that. But, and I trust y'all.
And you would, you would agree. Trust me, all, everybody would.
Yeah. And we made it very clear in this last redaction is we were not going to redact, we were going to redact as little as possible. And so, really looked at the security-sensitive information, pieces of those, and then redacted those.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Did we vote?
We did. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Spoke out.
No, no, E two.
E two is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute the 28th Amendment to the Containerized Commercial Solid Waste Collection and Disposal Services Contract with Waste Management of Texas Incorporated to allow modified fees for commercial solid waste collection services, on-demand household hazardous waste collection services, and residential recyclable collection services, and declaring an effective date.
And while Darrell's speaking, he's also going to do the two city manager items that relate to this topic on Gardenville and House...
Republic.
Which ones are you doing? I'm sorry.
Republic.
Republic waste, I'm sorry. Yeah. And then the Gardenville.
Let's get, let's get a motion.
I'm sorry.
Make a motion to approve item E two.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Darrell, do you want to present some stuff? Go ahead.
Well, I just want to kind of go through, I'm going to start with Republic because waste management's rates are directly affected by our landfill rate. And so, if council will remember when we leased property to Republic several years ago, as part of that, I could, the city could reject two or three rate increases not in consecutive years. And so, last year, their rate increase, we rejected. Unfortunately, this year, we have to take that rate increase. And that rate increase is 8.28%. It's a pretty good rate increase. So, the current rate that we're paying at the landfill is $31.20 a ton. The increase is, I'm sorry, the current rate is $28.81. The new rate will be 31.20. So, it's a $2.59 increase per ton. That's for our city trucks going to the landfill. Third-party costs... Third-party cost though, goes up 5%. Based off of Republic's contract, each year, they can do a rate increase over a two-year period not to exceed 8%. Last year, they did three. This year, they're doing 5%. So, our third-party increase goes from $49.92 to $52.41 per ton. That's an increase of $2.49. Now, the other thing that Republic is asking this year, and this is something new. We explained to council that we have an extra fee that's not in the part of the contract, which is for overloaded or untarp'd loads. And so, Republic is asking for a $25 safety fee. When you go to the landfill to dump, you're required to wear a hard hat and a safety vest. You're working around large equipment, dozers, compacters, garbage trucks. You've got people that are coming in there and pickup trucks, cars, trucks with trailers. We've had a few small incidents, nothing major. But one problem, and you can get these at the gate, they're gonna ask you when you go in, do you have a hard hat? Do you have a safety vest? You can get them there at the gate. But the problem we're having is people will say yes, or they'll take what we give them, they'll go in there and then they won't put it on. And so, what Republic is asking the city permission to do is charge that extra $25 if they catch someone up there not wearing the proper safety equipment. Now, Republicans told me that they will warn them the first time, but then after that, they will charge the $25. It is a problem. I know of several major close calls. I know of a lot of small things that have happened, but it's still up to the city whether or not we allow them to charge that. It is not subject to the CPI or anything like that. This is an extra charge that Republic seeks. And so, I would just need a little bit of direction on whether or not city council is fine with that so that the city manager could sign this and I could get back with Republic.
You said something about tarping too, but then you didn't talk about that at all.
We, we currently do that. That fee has been in place for probably six years, five or six years. That's the fee we charge if you come in with an untarp'd, untied down load. And if, Ms. Scott, if you'll remember, I talked about that when we were talking about the littering. That's, we charge that, or both of our contractors charge that at the landfill and the compost facility.
And the city gets that money?
No, sir. That goes to the, the two contractors, but I guess I need to remind you that they're responsible by permit to clean up the highway, the farm-to-market road within two miles of the landfill gate.
Darrell, just for clarification, what you're asking is, it's not part of this resolution, E2. This, this would have fought under the city manager report.
Correct.
So, you're just kind of wanting a nod of the head to see if council's even.
On the fine.
On the $25, $25,000. The $25.
The extra fee.
Yeah, so.
I'm okay with it. They ask you there at the gate, put it on. Loan you a hard hat, sell you a little bitty rinky-dink plastic vest. There's, there's no reason not to put it on and be safe out there.
And it happens more often than you think. I mean, I see it all the time.
I've been out there probably six times in the last year with a trailer. And this, yeah, they always, I wear it like I supposed to in that little vest. It's kind of funny though, I don't think that hard hat's gonna help if a bulldozer runs over you. There's nothing up, you know? Gonna fall out of the sky. It's funny, but I get it. It's their insurance company, you know? And I'm sure our lawyer friends love cases where, you know, so the insurance, sorry guys. It's the insurance company telling them, I get it. I don't have no problem with it either.
And you said that.
It goes to their management of that waste site. They must be able to control it.
Yeah.
If they see it as an issue that they need to control, we have given them the task of running that landfill. Are we gonna give them the tools to run it properly?
Yeah.
So, that's gonna be their fee?
That would be their fee, yes ma'am.
Okay. So, as long as they know, then the, the public knows that it's their fee because they're not complying with their laws, you know? It's not us imposing that.
I do want to remind the city or the council members, though, we own the landfill. So, ultimately, if something bad really happens out there, we could be on the hook. So, we want them to be as safe as possible.
Hopefully, they never collect a fee.
And there's a.
I certainly hope so.
Contractors that go a lot, I don't know how often you guys go, but, and they probably get like, oh, there's Jay over there or whatever. And they just don't bother with it. They need a tool to get them, come on guys, put that hard hat on, quit. Yeah, I get it.
Yes, sir.
When you spoke about tarp'd loads though, it doesn't have to necessarily be tarped if you're taking a load of pallets out, as long as it's tied down and secure.
Correct. But, you know, the reason that we, we did this several years ago is because what you have is people going out there in trailers. They take a cardboard box, they throw a bunch of stuff in it and as they're driving down the road, I mean, it's, you simply drive down either Highway 185 or Highway 87 South and you see, and you know that a lot of that comes out of those vehicles that are headed to the landfill because it's not tied down, it's not covered. You have people that put boards up on trailers. Well, that's fine for keeping it falling out the side, but it's not gonna keep it from blowing out the top. The next increase that we have, and I hate saying it that way, our compost facility. So, we have a 3.75% rate increase at our compost facility. So, we're going from $23.72 per ton to $24.61. So, that's an eighty, an increase of 89 cents. That compost facility is currently out for bid. Bids will be turned in on November 1st. We have a couple of interested folks who are, who came out and did the pre-bid meeting. So, I will probably be coming back sometime in December with the new contract to council.
Did the prices drop on compost after the hurricane?
No, sir, it did not.
No.
It would, it, it stayed the same. We do have a lot of what we picked up from the hurricane that we ground up and took out there has not been turned into compost yet because the volume is so large without what we get from the sewer plant, it's just chips.
And again, this is just a report, no action needed.
Yes, ma'am.
Information only. So, that takes you back to E2.
Brings me back to E2, which is Waste Management asking for their annual increase. The Waste Management increase though, is based off of disposal and based off of operational. So, on the operational side, we've got about a 3.3% increase. But then they're absorbing the 5% increase on the Republic side. So, each year when I talk about this, I talk about the cost of a six-yard being picked up once a week. Currently, that six-yard once a week is $136.15. That cost will go to $141.56, so an increase of about $5.41. This is, needs a council approval each year. But Waste Management is also having issues, as we are, with contamination in their recycling materials. So, they've asked for some language to put in that would allow them to charge an additional processing fee. And that would be based on the percentage of contamination in a dumpster. If the dumpster's completely contaminated, it's gonna go in the trash. If the dumpster's only 30% contaminated, council, several years ago, we passed a new rate, the $85 processing fee. That processing fee covers, when it hits the floor, they recycle what they can and we pay whatever's left that's not considered recyclable as trash. And it's built into that $85 processing fee. This fee would be different in that it would only be based if the recyclables are deemed unrecyclable. At which case, they're not gonna pick it up with a recycle truck, they're gonna send a garbage truck to pick it up. And they would be charged the garbage fee, not the recycle fee.
For commercial.
For commercial customers only. That have, that have rec, commercial recycling containers.
I'm sure they'll take photos, et cetera, before they do all that.
There has to be a photo, yes sir.
So, when the customer argues and, okay.
And that's in the language that would go into this amendment, that there will be photos taken and all that.
Any commercial customers are out there that really have recycled bins?
I, I would say we're less than probably 50.
And take away the school district?
Uh, if you take, yeah, well, then you, you might only be around 30. There's not that many.
I don't know of many.
And when you say contamination, are you talking about items that are not recyclable? Or are you talking about food contamination in those?
Any type of contamination. So, for us, it's grocery bags, it's food contamination, it's liquids, it's glass, it's plastics three through seven. It's those things, those items that are not accepted as part of our recycling program.
Greasy pizza box?
Greasy pizza box. Although here lately, our number one deal has been grocery bags. That's been our biggest issue.
Plastic grocery bags.
I got back a deal on ours yesterday and it was 15% grocery bags contamination, only 7% contamination after that.
I think it's by mistake. I think people still don't understand. They think it's okay to put those plastic bags, it's not.
And we're, we're gonna be pushing some stuff out. We had that discussion in our staff meeting yesterday.
Are they just throwing the bags in there or are they putting other recyclables in the bags?
Both. And once you put a recycle in the bag and then you throw it in there, unless it falls out, it's, it's deemed as trash.
That's important to get that out.
Yes, ma'am.
Jeff, looks like you.
Well, I'm just thinking that I probably contaminate a lot because my recycle bin has a trash bag in it and I pull the trash bag out and throw it in the recycle bin.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're guilty too.
I, I just, I'm sorry, I had no idea.
Back, back in.
I thought I was doing good.
When you had more manually separated, they could cut the bag open, dump it on the conveyor belt. Now, everything's done automated and there's no way for that automated to open up the bag, get it dumped completely, sort the bag separately from what's in it.
Well, I guess it comes from the training that we had to take the kids, they took the bottles to the school. So, we grab all these bags and take them to the school, so. We gotta untrain ourselves.
Take them to the grocery store.
And, and please keep in mind, the, the school program is different than our program in that what the school, the school's program is strictly around bottles and cans. The bottles and cans go in the bag, they're handled a little differently than what our household program is handled. That's a PepsiCo program that's, that's run through Waste Management. Our program's the City of Victoria program that deals with residential. So, yes, while the school district may throw away some cardboard mixed in and some paper mixed in, that's kind of just free stuff they're getting rid of that's not part of the program, but Waste Management is willing to accept and Pepsi's willing to pay for.
It's interesting, there's a video circulating on social media now of this exact problem that I just, I just happened to watch it about how plastic bags cause problems. And they showed the dumping in the plant and they use air to blow the lightweight materials away. Some of it, they dump in water and floats and all this, and they have this mess of bags they have to deal with that are contaminated. I just saw that the other day. Y'all might want to use it on your, your social media, help get the word out.
They get caught up in all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, and the machinery.
At the landfill, and at the landfill, we call them parachutes. You dump and on a windy day and that's what they turn into.
Yeah, yeah.
But you can take them to the grocery store.
Yes, ma'am, you can.
Not just that stores, they'll take anybody's.
Yes. Some of the stores in Victoria, because I've noticed that a couple do not have it any longer, but some of the stores do have recycled containers just as you walk in the door.
Yeah.
Four, four bags.
So, the plastics that we take are?
Plastics one and two.
Okay.
This little bottle here.
Your milk jugs.
Be contaminated?
You know, I, as much as I hate to say it, yes, ma'am, because now with the new, with the new rules from China and them wanting a half a percent of contamination, that cap and that plastic on the side is not recyclable. Not, not, it would mess, it could mess up your contamination. But when they crush the bottle, it blows the cap off, so we're pretty good.
But the labor was tough to take off.
Okay.
They never said it would be easy to recycle, they just said it's good to do.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, I believe, on E2.
I'll ask another day on what we're saving.
Yep, yep. Resist the urge.
Another day conversation, haven't we?
Okay, if there's no further conversation on E2, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, E3.
E3 is a resolution ratifying the programs and expenditures included in the Victoria Sales Tax Development Corporation's fiscal year 2018-19 budget and declaring an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same?
Aye.
Okay, did you get that? Okay. E.
E4 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and if awarded, accept a grant from the Golden Crescent Regional Advisory Council in the amount of $21,573.62 for support for a regional bariatric acute care transport unit to be managed and operated by the Victoria Fire Department and declaring an effective date.
Second.
Motion, second. Are there questions? Chief, did you have any?
I'm here to answer your questions.
Okay.
Where will it be stored? At one of our fire stations. It'll operate as a normal ambulance for us, it just. Dispatch from one location. Dispatch from a location with attachments that'll allow it to become a bariatric unit as needed.
Does it include a stretcher?
Yes, it includes a stretcher, yes.
Just hydraulic or?
Uh, it's a, it's a winch system with ramps and the stretcher's just made for a bariatric patient.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, I just have it.
E5 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for and if awarded, accept a selective traffic enforcement program comprehensive grant from the Texas Department of Transportation in the amount of $34,629.42, which requires financial participation from the city in the amount of $7,596.12 and declaring an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you.
E6 is a resolution awarding the Water Tower Number Six Rehab Project to MK Painting Incorporated for their low bid of $878,500, authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to complete the project and declaring an effective date.
So, move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Seeing, Donald, did you have anything to add?
No, thank you.
Nope. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same? Okay, thank you. Get that Water Tower rehab. So, city manager reports, we have, I know.
Two additional.
Two left.
Two left, yes, sir.
Okay.
Darrell's gonna just do a brief reminder of what the Household Hazardous Waste Program is. I was visiting with somebody recently and they were asking me what to do with paint. And so, I kind of thought maybe it's a good time to do a reminder to the public on what the service is all about.
So, in 2012, we set up this HHW. And, you know, it's, it's a great program. It get, you, it does not get used as much as we think it should get used. But it, it's great that Ms. Garrett brought it up because these are things that we don't want going into a ditch. We don't want them going into our landfill. And so, it's, it's simple. I know that some of the council members have used it, but it's as easy as calling 1-800-449-7587. You tell them what you have that you need to get rid of. They're gonna send you a kit in the mail, it's got a bag. If it fits in the bag, you put it in the bag with some labels and different things. And so, they come to your front door and they pick it up. You know, I don't know how much simpler it could be. As far as what they take, you know, and I won't go through the whole list, but, you know, all your chemicals that you've got laying around your house, you know, your paints, metal polish, cool chemicals, sharps, things like that, that you can put out there, your herbicides and, and different things. But they also take your TVs, your old batteries. Now, I would also tell you that Interstate Battery here in Victoria takes batteries and they will pay you for most batteries as well. So, there's a local way, because when you call this number, it may be two weeks, it may be three weeks before they schedule you, depending on who's on their schedule and where you're at. They take televisions, you know? I, I joke with people, the one complaint, because they, they're gonna send you a card to fill out, a survey card. The one survey card that I've received back since we started this complaining about this was they would only take one TV at a time. So, but they'll take your computer, your old computer monitors and stuff. We get questions about microwaves, those can go in your trash can. They don't, you don't have to wait to have them pick up your microwave. But it's a, it's an easy, simple way to take care of those items that are laying around when you're cleaning out your house or you come across an old bottle of chemicals, as long as you know what's in there. As long as you know what's in there, you can label it, or it's still in that bottle, you can call them in, schedule the pickup, and they'll come pick it up. It's 65 cents a month, you pay for it. We're encouraging people to use it. Let's get these things where they're properly taken care of and not left out somewhere or end up in our landfill. And I'll answer any questions. Yes, sir?
Specifically, I didn't see printers.
A printer can go in the regular trash can.
Regular trash can, okay, thank you.
Yeah, and if it's a large printer or something like that, that you've got, you can call in for our bulky waste pickup, and we can pick it up that way.
You just got to get the icing out of them first.
Yes.
As far as paint, if it's water-based, they can just let it dry out and then throw it in the...
You can do that with oil-based paint as well. If it's dry, you can put it in a landfill, but it has to be dry. If it's, if it's in a liquid form, this is the way you take care of it.
We talk about this often, you put kitty litter in the paint to dry the paint out.
Kitty litter, sawdust, anything like that to help dry it out quicker. So there's, there's, you know, I would, you can always call the environmental office, 485-3230. If you've got a question, we can walk you through it, because there may be a local way you can handle some of these things.
And so have you been interviewed by Mr. OC and put this on Channel 15 and...
We've done this a couple of times in the, in the last several years, yes, sir.
Maybe, I don't know if anything's running now, maybe just do another update.
We have a recycling update running right now. We just put online, I think, last week, which talks about some of the points we talked about earlier with our programs.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
A friendly reminder. So the last item, and I know we've had a long evening, but wanted to talk about generators a little bit. I know I've got Donald's name beside that, so, but I want to introduce this and see if we have any questions. Last May, it was actually May 15th, we entered into a contract with Power Secure to build and place a generator at the raw, raw water pump station. I have a hard time saying that all at once, say it three times. But, so which, we're almost, I think, the generator's in place, the fuel tank's been in place, and we just got to do some testing, but that, that was a turnkey solution from Power Secure. But you may also remember, at that time, when we started looking at this, we were working with Power Secure to do four generators. The raw water pump, the surface water treatment plant, the regional sewer plant, waste, wastewater plant, sewer plant, and then the water pump plant at Airline, which we call Pump Plant 3, which is our booster plant. So those were the four we originally started with. But at the time, I asked council to, we knew that there was money coming out through grant programs from Harvey. We had hazards mitigation money. And so I said, "Let's see where we're going to be in the fall with this. If we know if we're going to get grant money, do we want to use grant money to, you know, buy generators?" As we sit here today, I cannot tell you where we're going to get grant money through the mitigation grants. So what I'd like for you to do is think about, and if I could possibly have a decision when we come back on the 30th, because John needs to get some contracts done with engineering, engineers for the generators. Do we want to continue to wait to see if we're going to get money through those grants? Or do we want to go back to what we started, you know, last year, and go back to Power Secure and move forward with the city paying for those three other generators? It's, it's a risk, you know, it depends on how risk averse are you? Do you want to go through another hurricane season next year? Probably not having generators in place, but using a contract where we can get a generator brought in. You know, I said we would do that when we got in that cone of uncertainty. You know, we would have a generator brought in, we have Ashbrit contracts that would do that. The thing, you know, like I said, it's a risk. So as you know right now, this past summer, we've had a busy storm season. You've had numerous hurricanes at various locations throughout the United States. So if we're on the tail end, say we're the third or the fourth storm for the season, are there going to be those really big generators for us to get, even though we have a contract for Ashbrit to bring generators in? There's so many, you know, so many generators available. So that's part of that risk. And so I just kind of need you to think about, do you want us to move forward? We would do with Power Secure, it's the turnkey program where they would come in, you know, do everything that they need to bring the generator in and install it. In this case, though, this is where we would pay a maintenance fee, an annual maintenance fee. They take the burden of the initial upfront cost because they'd be able to sell some electricity back through ERCOT and make their money back. So it's just for you to ponder, if you have any questions about it, answer questions tonight. Donald and Gilbert did an extensive study at the time on that, is why we brought forth that recommendation. But John's telling me we have no idea when that mitigation money's going to get here.
Is that one?
The only thing I can promise you right now is I don't, I think there's pretty close to a 0% chance that you're going to have generators via grant funds by next hurricane season. To tell you when we're going to have them, I, it's up in the air, but it's, I don't see any chance you're going to have them by next hurricane season through the hazard mitigation program.
And that hazard mitigation program, is that a GLO program?
It's actually FEMA application, but John, John is dealing with it, it's, it's money that's coming through GLO, but your, your application process is still FEMA-based, and it's still the same, as John has told me, it's still the same application process that FEMA's been using for years. And, you know, and just for the public, you know, there's different buckets of money that we're dealing with through Harvey and FEMA, but this is the hazard mitigation money, so. But John, you may...
Well, the other issue is the, the money that's being administered by the GLO is CDBG money, it's HUD money. It has additional strings attached regarding income. So 70% of that money has to benefit low and moderate income persons. So you have a geographic limitation as to where you can spend that money. So if the generator, if a generator at the water plant or the surface water plant serves the entire community, you're not going to use CDBG money to do it. So that probably applies to all these generators, I think, I don't think you're going to get GLO or CDBG DR money to cover the cost of any of these large-scale generators.
That was Fox Run money, right?
I'm sorry?
Fox Run qualified for that.
Same program, different activity.
And there's no guarantee, after we go through this whole process, that we'll even get money for generators?
No, there's none.
That's why it's a risk, you know, what's your risk tolerance for going another hurricane season and seeing, so...
If, I don't want to be foolish about this, but if we, if we fix the problem ourselves, does that not, is that a qualification?
Is it, yes, it does right now. So, you know, we've talked, and I know I've talked to the mayor in the past, about communities that have financial resources to go ahead and start taking care of some of their issues and not waiting on grant money, you're almost punished in a sense because we've been fiscally conservative and we've had a reserve. So I think from a political side, that we need to talk to our legislators about consideration on reimbursing us for those expenses we have.
But that, who do you go talk to?
I think it's...
Who hasn't been talked to about it?
I do, I don't...
I'm so frustrated by it, I know the mayor is, too, everybody, I mean, do you talk to our state rep? Do you talk to our state senator? Do you talk to the new representative, Representative Cloud?
It's federal.
I think it's federal.
You tell him to fire FEMA, what do you tell him?
Well, but, but again, I go, I go back to that decision point, you know. So, but, you know, if y'all will think through that for the next couple of weeks, call me if you have any questions. And then on the 30th, we've, we'll have a contract that's part of the Grant Works program and the mitigation program where we, we'll need to enter into a contract with an engineer to do the design work for generators. And so John's bringing back contracts that would take care of five generators or take care of just two generators. So we'll be able, and so the two generators that are left are the community center generator and the police department generator. And we, I would recommend we continue to move through the grant process for those two.
I'm confused when you said two, because earlier you said something about three.
There's five. There's five total generators that we're applying for grant money.
Okay.
Three, we would pull out and do ourselves if that's what you wish to do, and that's the surface water treatment plant, the regional wastewater plant, and Plant 3, the booster station at Airline. Those are the three under the Public Works. So there's a total of five generators that we applied for mitigation money on.
Could we look at, if we were to pull out three, that we would do ourselves? Could we look at as part of that ensuring that we have good transfer switches at the other two locations?
For the...
Police station and the community center.
I think we, aren't we working on that, Tom?
Our initial, our initial notice intent was to, for PD and for the community center was the transfer switch or the quick connect. But what we've decided to do is revise that and actually apply for mitigation funds to have a permanent emergency generator at each of those locations.
But if we're going to wait on that funding before we do anything there, I'm saying as part of these other three, if we decide to pull it out, I'd like to go ahead and get that transfer switch. You would have to have it either way.
Instead of, so...
You'd make it an automatic transfer switch, but...
We can just draw it.
You can hook it up, yeah.
Absolutely.
Eliminate that right away. I thought we were already, I thought that, but...
I remember we put all that on hold just to see if we can't get some funding for it and...
Absolutely, we did, so.
Because we weren't going to meet this last hurricane season anyway.
No, no, sir.
Just lead time on equipment, it's not going to work.
But we do believe that if we decide to move forward with doing this ourself, we need to have a contract in place and get ready to go in January, so that company will have plenty of time.
To make June 1st.
To, well, or July, yes, sir.
Well, I'm with Councilman Bocknight in that we feel like we've tried to operate in a very fiscally prudent and conservative way. And then for that, we get penalized for doing the job right.
Get me started.
Maybe we can ask for a grant from Houston.
No good deed goes unpunished.
So since it, so on the 30th, it'll just be back under a city manager report, because I'm just looking for a nod of the head on what you want to do.
Okay. We can be ready for that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Is there any further business? If not, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, I'm going to be back in a couple of minutes.